Well.
Staffs heard us talk, do you have a recommendation?
We may want to take the staff's original suggestion. Take no action and bring it back. Would next week be enough time?
Well, sorry to complicate this. To do that, you would actually need to postpone. If you take no action, then the deadline is not met and we're supposed to be proceeding to demolition.
Good point.
I think Commissioner Hodges has demonstrated we probably can come up with a warning if he'd like this evening. I think question number one is whether you wish to incorporate a closing deadline in the interest of moving that step in the process along or whether you would wish -- whether you're open to just having a commencement deadline, recognizing closing would have to happen somewhere in the intervening time between now and that commencement deadline. If you just set it off to a commencement deadline, we run the risk of we get to the commencement deadline to find out there is no closing, there's no interested buyer, and we either need to extend the deadline further or we miss the opportunity to proceed with demolition by two weeks.
Ultimately, the demolition is what I'd like to avoid because I don't want the city to spend its money on it. Not having the closing gives the owner of the property, current owner, a little more flexibility, I think, if he could scramble up another purchase if that -- if in fact this sale doesn't go through. So I guess, although I'm fine with the motion that Commissioner Hodges has made, I prefer it to not have the closing in and just ride with it. But that's just me. And I think that gives all parties more flexibility.
I will add a piece of additional information. This is a little different than some of the others because there was fire damage and there was insurance on the property that by Kansas state law, a certain percentage of the proceeds from that fire insurance is held in escrow to ensure that the property is made safe and taken care of. So Mr. Raven camp did mention that. It wouldn't be enough to fully demo the house, but it is enough to address structural things. So there is some of those monies there, whether he chooses to demo or we choose to demo, set aside in this case because of the fire damage.
He didn't speak directly to the use of that money to pay for the fire damage, but could that be used for the person that has the lien for the cleanup? Because what I was hearing, he's going to possibly use that at closing to take care of that part of the obligation.
Yeah, I've never seen that used in this sale scenario. So I mean, depending on the situation, we can get additional information on that, but I just thought it was worth noting. It is a little different than some of the other properties we've done.
Yeah, I think the intention is the city would hold those funds in escrow until it's either demolished or brought off the dangerous structure. So timing wise, it probably doesn't free it up at closing. I think Lauren's point is while we have some funds, probably not enough to cover the repair or the demolition, but it does kind of mitigate the city's expense a little bit.
Can I just say one thing on this? The money that the cities has in their escrow, I don't know where it's at, but anyway, I've already contacted somebody to demo the house and it's less than what they're holding. So I mean, it's around $12,000 to have it demoed. And so it's not like the city's going to have to -- I was planning on having a demo rather than the city because I can get it done cheaper.
Yeah, that was the point I was going to make. I would agree that you probably can get it done cheaper than we can by the time we get insurance requirements and some other things imposed.
Well, that's the other thing with an April 1 commencement date is that gives the flexibility that Mr. Raven camp, I think clearly understands he needs to get closed before that. The potential buyers were here, they understand they need to get closed and need to get started. But for some reason, if things don't work out, that gives Mr. Raven camp a little time to not only pursue another buyer, but also secure demo if that is necessary.
And I do have another buyer that was a little upset with me that I didn't get with him before I sold it to this party here, which is a next door neighbor.
I guess, and my reason for not including the closing would be I don't think we'd be taking any action towards demo if the closing date were missed. Does that just as soon not give me another hurdle to have to jump over?
Would it be possible to just, and I don't even know that it needs to be attached to this resolution or anything, but just to ask that staff lets us know when the closing date has occurred so that, you know, what I don't want to see is that we're back here like in late May because the commencement date has been missed and then we start a whole nother series of processes and then we find ourselves in fall and not being able to address it again. So I think I just want to get off the treadmill for this.
We certainly can report on the closing date and if you impose a commencement deadline and it's missed, one of two things is going to happen. We're going to -- Mr. Raven camp's going to demonstrate he's proceeding with demolition or we're going to proceed with demolition or you're going to get another request for an extended deadline on your agenda.
Well, if you were to take the resolution that's being proposed and to update it with a potential timeline that you suggested of April 1 and July 1, that basically with Section 3 that we were looking at earlier, basically creates a scenario that if that April 1 deadline is missed, if we want to be tough, we don't have to come back and have this conversation. We just go right to bid.
Right.
And if you don't have a closing deadline in there, I think Section 3 works and you're left with the owner of record is directed to repair or remove the structure and to make the premises safe and secure. The work shall be commenced no later than April 1 and shall be diligently prosecuted so as to allow for substantial completion no later than July 1. Is that what we said?
Correct.
That's what I'd like my motion to say that I'm making again, that we approve resolution number 19-7675 with the dates of commencement by April 1 and completion, substantial completion by July 1, 2019.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion?
I think we simplified that.
But it didn't feel like it. At least we all do understand now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
I thought we had a five.
If we could ask Commissioner Hoppick to come back in, I appreciate it.
Ironically, the one that could probably advise us something.
Probably right. Thought crossed my mind.
Well, he's going to find out that we didn't impose a deadline on him and his private life.
Item 7.4.
Mayor Davis, I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 35 minutes to discuss the subject of anticipated mediation with representatives of the U.S. Department of Justice and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers associated with pending litigation in U.S. District Court related to the former Schilling Air Force Base environmental matter with environmental counsel for the Salina public entities and the city's legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 6:00.
Oops, I'm sorry, let me turn my mic on.
Oh, did I jump the gun?
Well, no, but we've taken a little bit different approach. We've kind of parsed this into a staff report that we could make in open session. And so as you factor in your time, we have a little bit of staff report to give.
Motion withdrawn again.
No, no, no. I'd rather you finish it and we can just incorporate it.
What I would suggest. We can take it in our discussion.
After the initial staff report, allow to the next big number on the clock.
As a break.
As a break and then at 35 minutes.
I think that works.
A 35 minute executive session. Time to be determined.
We'll say returning at 6:40 and whatever.
Would you like to do the staff presentation?
Yeah, we'll do the staff presentation and see if we have time left. All right, how long a break we need? I can tell the city attorney is not wild about that approach.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I do think we're anticipating now having the staff report. Am I correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I would, in that you will remain in session for that staff report, I do think it's important that that occur before the motion is made and voted on.
Just cut it. You didn't even have it, Shandy.
But admittedly, this is the first time we've tried this approach. So we're trying to provide you a report as well as the public, the background that we came publicly as it relates to this topic. So Ms. Tasker is prepared to do that.
You had me going. I was packing up and ready to go.
This is on the, if you have an original version of the agenda, it won't -- there should be on the new print, the second page didn't print on the first printing?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Tasker, thank you. We're ready, okay. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The former Schilling Air Force Base site was operated by the United States Department of Defense from 1942 until 1965. At first, it was identified as a Smoky Hill Army Field and then as a Strategic Air Command Base. In 1957, the site was renamed as the former Schilling Air Force Base. Following closure of the Schilling Air Force Base in 1965, a title to the significant majority of the land and buildings included on the site was conveyed by the United States of America to four local public entities. The Kansas Education Authority, which is now known as the Kansas Board of Regents, received the title to the property which K-State Polytechnic Campus is located. USD 305 received title to the property which now Salina Area Technical College is located and it's operated under a lease agreement from USD 305. The Salina Airport Authority received title to the property upon which the Salina Regional Airport, the SLN Aviation Center, and the Salina Industrial Center are located. The city received the wastewater treatment plant along with all the public right-of-way and utilities. Under federal law, the United States Army Corps of Engineers is tasked with investigation of environmental contamination at formerly used defense sites, which the Schilling Air Force Base is one of those. After years of negotiation with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and based upon much investigation, legal, and technical work, the city, the airport authority at KSU, and USD 305, which is now known as the Salina Public Entities, determined it was necessary to file suit against the United States of America. And this was being done in order to serve the interests of our community and most importantly, to protect our public water supply. The Salina Public Entities filed suit in 2010 in the United States District Court, seeking reimbursements for costs that would, had occurred, would occur for any response actions at the former Schilling Air Force Base for a declaratory judgment on the United States' liability for these future costs. Through court-supervised mediation in 2012, the Salina Public Entities and the United States negotiated an agreement to enter into a consent decree, which is basically a voluntary agreement between the four Salina Public Entities and the United States, settling the claims associated with the environmental contamination at the former Schilling Air Force Base site. In the consent decree, the state of Kansas, which is represented by the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, serves as the oversight agency. In that role, KDHE issued a consent agreement and final order, ordering the Salina Public Entities to complete a remedial investigation and feasibility study, which included an agreed-upon scope of work and an estimated cost of, to complete the corrective action work that's needed to be done. The corrective action, or the CAD, is a required step in any major environmental cleanup project and is a crucial step toward identifying the selected remedy and scope of work and estimated cost to complete the cleanup of the environmental contamination. The U.S. and public entities, through a mediation process, agreed upon $9,363,000 as the estimated cost for the remedial investigation and feasibility work. The United States agreed to pay the Salina Public Entities 90% of that cost, which is the sum of $8,426,700, and the city paid the remaining 10% for the Salina Public Entities in amount of $936,330. The combined contributions totaled $9,363,000 and that was deposited in a special account at the city pursuant to a local agreement among the four Salina Public Entities. Payments from the funds have been expended in accordance with the local agreement, the consent decree, and the consent agreement and final order. The remedial investigation and feasibility study is nearing completion and it's well under budget and it will culminate with KDHE's issuance of the CAD. Mediation has long been the alternative dispute resolution process, thought to be best suited to resolve the remaining issues presented by implementation of the KDHE-approved plan for remediation. Doug Kern of Stinson Leonard Street and Law Firm serves as our environmental counsel for the public entities. So basically trying to give you a quick background of where we've been and where we think we need to go to resolve the remaining part of the project. And with that, city staff and legal counsel request an attorney-client privileged executive session with environmental counsel for the Salina Public Entities and the city's legal counsel regarding the subject anticipated mediation associated with the pending litigation in the U.S. District Court relating to the former Schilling Air Force Base environmental. We anticipate there could be some possible action after that. So that's a very quick outline of the last 15 or 20 years. So amongst people like Greg for Legal Counselor, Mike, we've all have a lot of time invested in this and together we could hopefully answer any questions you might have.
Do we have a sense of when the remedial investigation and study completion date is or has it been completed and it's just at KDHE? Or is that something we're going to talk about when we come back?
I can take that, you can take.
Sure, go ahead.
The feasibility, or the remedial investigation and feasibility study work has all been submitted to KDHE and they're in the process of developing their corrective action decision with the anticipation of that being completed in the near future. We thought near future was into February, but now we think it may be the first part of March, but it's very near completion.
The one thing I would add is there will be a public meeting process once the KDHE finalizes their corrective action decision and intention is that that'll be here in the community and we'll make that known and that'll be the point that they roll out their decision.
That's anticipated mid-March, pending when the final CAD is out for review.
I might add, Mayor, if I may, that our opportunity to consult with environmental counsel during your executive session will be by telephone. He will be present by telephone, I'll be present.
All right, thank you. So hearing of further questions, you are well rehearsed.
Okay. I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 35 minutes to discuss the subject of anticipated mediation with representatives of the U.S. Department of Justice and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers associated with pending litigation in U.S. District Court relating to the former Schilling Air Force Base environmental matter with environmental counsel for the Salina Public Entities and the city's legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 6:45 PM for 35 minutes.
Could we take a five minute, start at 6:15 and come back at 6:50?
A five minute break in between.
That's fine with me. So moved.
All in favor of moving into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I would note, as Martha mentioned, we do anticipate the possibility of you taking action yet this evening following the executive session. action yet this evening following the executive session.
...
I move the City Commission recess into executive session or extend our executive session for another 15 minutes to discuss the subject of anticipated mediation with representatives of the U.S. Department of Justice and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers associated with pending litigation in U.S. District Court relating to the former Schilling Air Force Base environmental matter with Environmental Council for these line of public entities and the city's legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 7:06.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.